Good evening, everyone. If I could have the council members take their seats. We're ready to begin. We'll give Councilman Vivekia one more minute. Okay. All right. I'd like to call the June Cranston City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning. Councilman Hopkins.
President.
Councilman Stychos.
Here.
Councilman McCauley.
Here.
Councilman Arquette.
President.
Councilman Brady.
Present.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Here.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Present.
Council President Forina.
Present. For the record, Madam Clerk, Councilman Lanning is still recovering from his medical issue. We wish him a speedy recovery. Moving on, public acknowledgments. Oops. Sorry. Will everyone please rise and join in Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and we are proud of your precious stand as one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under public acknowledgements and commendations, we have none. Before we get to public hearings tonight, Councilman Stychos asked me a question before the start of the meeting, and he'd like to ask it to the attorneys right now. Actually, we'll give Mr. Vivekia a minute to take his seat. Good evening, Mr. Vivekia. Councilman Stychos.
All right. I would like to just raise the issue of the way in which Councilman Brady was seated. And this, I would like to emphasize, has nothing personally directed at Councilman Brady, but does have to do with the Charter. And I've talked with Evan Kirshenbaum on this on the phone, and I just want to get my opinion out there and listen to his as well. But under the Charter, Section 309, it says that, and I'll just summarize, but it says that the council can make no appointment unless by an affirmative vote of a majority of all council, all the members of the council. So that would be five would be a majority. And my understanding is that did not happen at the meeting the other day. So this, I think, is an issue just because it needs to be done the right way, but also because in the future, if there's a vote that's five to four, regardless of who's on what side, the, I think, a lawyer could challenge the propriety of the vote, given the way in which one of the members was seated. And I don't think we need to go through that aggravation. So that's why I'm raising, one of the reasons I'm raising it.
Thank you, Councilman Stychos. Attorney Kirshenbaum or Attorney Vivekia, did you want to fill us in?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. We actually had discussed this myself, Attorney Kirshenbaum, as well as Solicitor Rosson. And the section you're referring to, as we understand it, and in our opinion, applies to the situation where there was an appointment for a city or municipal position or office. My understanding, and Mr. Kirshenbaum, I'm sure will expand on this a bit, is that when there was a vacancy in a council seat, the Ward Committee chooses the replacement. I believe that the action of the council was more in the nature of a ministerial act. I don't believe that it is in the spirit of Section 3.09, in the sense that the advice and consent of the council is needed to appoint a person to a position in city government. There's a difference between elective office and city government. So I believe that the intent of that particular section pertains, or was intended to address appointments to positions and not elective offices. And I also am of the opinion, and this is my opinion, that the action of the council was superfluous. I don't believe it was even needed. As I said before, I think it was more in the nature of ministerial and maybe even ceremonial because the charter is clear, whether it's a Democrat or a Republican, where there is a vacancy, that vacancy is to be filled by a person of the same party. So if there were, in theory, seven Democrats and only two Republicans, I mean, to take any other position would mean that the majority party could effectively disenfranchise the people of a particular ward by simply either not showing up or refusing to confirm the appointment. And I don't believe that that is the intention of the Charter, to disenfranchise any particular ward or block of voters. So that's my take on it. Mr. Kirshenbaum, I'm sure has his own.
I'll be short. I agree with Mr. Vivekia. I think you have to read the two sections, 2.06 and 3.09, in concert with each other. And 3.09 accepts ministerial or procedural acts from the voter requirement, as I said forth in 3.09. 2.06 does talk about not appointing, but filling a position, and it further limits the person who can fill this position. This position can only be filled by a person belonging to the same political party as a late incumbent, and if he's from a ward, from the same ward as a late incumbent. So it's not really a deliberative act of the council, as if there were a, let's say, a zoning matter before you. This is not something that is really for the kind of debate as a bill or ordinance would be before you. I recall two specific examples in my brief tenure here with the City of Cranston. One was with the Councilman Presutoro.
(Inaudible).
Yeah. And the Chair of the Democratic Party appointed Councilman McDonough to represent the balance of his term. And there was also a situation with the Councilman Palatier, for which Ms. Marie Bucci was appointed by the party, the Democratic Party. And I do not recall off the top of my head whether any vote was taken whatsoever. I don't think there was, to be honest with you. I don't recall it. He was introduced as the appointment, and he, in the case of Councilman McDonough, and he took over the duties of Councilman Presutoro at that point. I don't think particularly that this was a vote other than a purely procedural act. There needed to be someone appointed. There needed to be someone appointed from the same party. The natural person who would do this would be the party chair and the Ward Committee. This is how most of the appointments occur in the city, and it was just a robust stance, if you will, of that act.
Thank you, Attorney Kirshenbaum. Councilman Stychos.
Well, thank you for your opinion. It won't be long. I do disagree with those opinions because, as it says in Section 206, "Any vacancy in the council shall be filled by the council." So it's quite possible there could be two Republicans from Ward Four who were interested, and the council would decide which one by a majority vote. But that's really what I have to say on the issue. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on with the business of the evening. Public hearings. This section of the meeting is open to any docketed matter. So if you'd like to speak on a docketed matter, name and address to the record. Anyone? With no one, that portion of the meeting is now closed. There are no resolutions before us this evening. Report of Committees. Finance Committee.
Okay. Now we're working. We heard 518-02, ordinance authorizing the city to utilize city western Cranston police impact fees for police station lease payments sponsored by Councilman Stychos. I believe that passed in committee and adjourned passage at the council.
Motion approved. I have a second. I have a motion and a second for Councilman Brady. What this is, is every year in the budget, there are impact fees we collect from houses, as you're aware, but we use those funds to offset rent in the police station, which is allowable under the capital process. Clerk, please take the roll. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes.
Council President Forina.
Yes.
Next, we have 518-03, ordinance authorizing loan order for the City of Cranston to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, renovation, repair, alteration, and equipping of playgrounds and athletic fields in the city by the issuance of not more than $2 million in bonds and notes they are for. This is a parks and recreation bond sponsored by Council President Forina, myself, Councilman Hopkins, McCauley, Coldford, and Paplaskas. This passed unanimously, I believe, in committee adjourned passage.
Motion to approve. A motion approved. I have a second. Under discussion, Councilman Brady.
I'm growing up in Cranston, planning to post my whole life, so I think it's, you know, this is great, and I'd like to be added as a cosponsor on all the procedures we do several.
As one of those key sponsors, I will allow you to be added as a cosponsor. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes.
Council President Forina.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements. There's a list there. This passed unanimously, committee adjourned passage.
Is any motion approved?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes.
Council President Forina.
Yes.
Next, we have resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements. This passed unanimously in committee, adjourned passage.
Motion approved. I have a motion approved. I have a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes.
Council President Forina.
Yes.
Next, we have the tax interest waiver approvals, passed unanimously as well, adjourned passage here.
Is any motion approved?
Motion approved.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes.
Council President Forina.
Yes. And Council Vice President?
Well, we have one more, I believe. Is this 518-01? Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's in public works. I thought it was in the same.
Sorry, Council Vice President. It was at the bottom of the page, and then it flipped, so I got confused earlier, too. Council, Councilman Hopkins, Public Works.
Thank you, President. We have 518-01, ordinance amendment of Title 13.08 of the current city of Cranston, 2005, entitled Public Services Based on Discharge Limits, sponsored by Council Vice President Vivekia, was referred to the Public Works Committee on June 14th, and it was approved by committee unanimously.
Is any motion approved?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Under discussion, Councilman Stychos.
Yes. Could somebody explain to me what this does? I wasn't a committee.
Council Vice President?
Yes. Thank you. Councilman, this complies with changes in the state and federal laws with regard to these discharge limits, so that we're in compliance. So I think that that was just the basis of it, just to bring us into compliance with what's currently on the books, as opposed to, there were some changes in these limits. I know Solicitor Kirshenbaum has dealt with these things quite a bit in the past, but I wouldn't put him on the spot. But these, Mr. Mason gave us the breakdown on this, I believe, but this basically complies with what the current law is, so that we're not in, you know, contradicting current federal and state law.
Stychos.
But it's a higher limit than what was previously allowed. There is, are we stricter than the federal?
I think so. I think there's some changes based on some technical issues, so that you couldn't, we wouldn't be able to comply with that previous discharge limit, especially in that five-day carbonaceous biochemical category. I know that there was some discussion about that. I can't remember exactly, but obviously, that's changed and increased. But I think it, I think it's necessary for us to be able to comply with the law. We were, you know, I guess we were not able to do what they previously had requested. But Mr. Mason was, I believe, fully aware of it and felt that we needed to do this so that we're in compliance. It's not that he wants to increase, you know, waste.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes.
Council President Forina.
Yes. Thank you, Councilman Hopkins. Moving on to Claims Committee. Council Vice Chairman Majora Paplaskas, if you could read these.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. There's a report here of claims that were settled for informational purposes only, and your reading pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Majora Paplaskas. Public hearings, open to any matter. Anyone would like to get up and say anything? Good evening. You know the drill, but name and address to the record.
97 Cypress Drive. I'm not sure if I can speak about compassion centers this evening. I know that's for the.
During this section of the meeting, you can talk about whatever you want, so you can talk about compassion centers, whatever you feel like speaking about. This is your time as a constituent to come and tell us anything you need to.
Oh, I can't?
We just can't engage because it's not in the docket.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Say something about compassioners, we'll listen. We just can't ask questions about it.
Okay. Very good. First of all, on behalf of the members of Garden City Alliance for Ward Six, I would like to congratulate Councilman Brady on his appointment to the City Council for Ward Four. We look forward to hearing Mr. Brady's views regarding all issues that come before him in this chamber. I would like to speak about compassion centers this evening, just briefly, businesses that I fully support. I have had the opportunity to accompany a close friend to a compassion center on many occasions. I do not own a medical marijuana card, and for that reason, cannot legally be admitted into the building, so I ring the car. I have always observed a number of people coming and going from the center. They appear to be in their late twenties to mid-seventies. Medical marijuana is not easy to obtain. Even your physician must complete an application provided by the Department of Health, and the package must be returned and leave a copy of a photo ID and a charge of $50. Upon receipt of the document, the Department of Health will review your application and notify you by mail with a letter of approval or denial of your request. If approved, you must make a visit to the Department of Health, where your photo will be taken and a card issued to you. In my opinion, there should be no apprehension about having a medical marijuana dispensary within the city limits. If the owners of these businesses comply with the zoning laws and regulations put forth by the city and state, there should be no reason for unease among residents. The three existing dispensaries in Rhode Island, located in Warwick, Providence, and Portsmouth are all situated in industrial or commercial areas away from neighboring communities and according to zoning restrictions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Pauline. Anyone else speak on anything today? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Move on to election of city officials. The advice and consent of the Conservation Commission calls Santucci for reappointment for a term set to expire June 25th, 2021. Is any motion approved? So moved. Is any motion approved in a second? Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes.
Council President Forina.
Yes. We have the Chief of the Cranston Fire Department, Chief William McKenna.
That's what I was going to say. Yes. Where it's not, it's not an election.
We'll wait. We'll wait to reappoint him for another year. Library Board of Trustees, Roberta Costa, reappointment for a term set to expire in July 29th, 2021. Second. I have a motion approved in a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes.
Council President Forina.
Yes. Julie Colangelo, reappointment to the Library Board of Trustees for a term set to expire July 29th, 2021.
Motion approved.
I have a motion approved. I have a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes. We have nothing to do on Report of City Officers. Executive Communications, all you do, we all have the report on hiring special councils and constituents. Does anyone have any questions on that report at this time? Seeing none, we have a request to be continued in service for one year. Captain Frank Ennis at the Cranston Fire Department.
Captain, Captain Ennis has fulfilled the requirements to continue, and we thank him for his continued service.
Meeting all requirements, I'll send a motion approved. So moved. Second. I have a motion and a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes. I have a request for continuation of service for Chief William McKenna of the Cranston Fire Department. Director Muskin?
Very happily, I'm pleased that Chief McKenna is choosing to stay with us and would like to continue to stay with us, and he has fulfilled all the requirements to do so.
Having met all the requirements for Chief McKenna, is there a motion approved as continuation of service? So moved. I have a motion and a second. Under discussion, Councilman Hopkins.
Yes. Thank you, President. Just a point of, letting the public know that Chief McKenna is unbelievable in the job that he does. I have a young family, lived here for 40 years, and I've seen how the department runs on a daily basis, especially the one coming out of Garden City. And Chief McKenna runs a very, very good ship. I just want to compliment him on that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
Councilman McCauley.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas.
Yes.
Council Vice President Vivekia.
Yes.
Council President Forina.
Yes. Lastly, Director Muskin, do you have an update on the property at 211 Grand Avenue Four?
Yes, so Grand Avenue is the one there's a question of whether or not it has more units than it is zoned to have. A second notice of violation did go out to them. They have a timeframe in which to respond. I believe at this point, they have not responded, which means it moves to the court now. The next step is it moves to the court. We can't do much faster than that, but we are moving through the process on it. So they are in violation as far as we're concerned.
So to confirm they're in violation, they would send a second notice, and now we'll move on to the municipal court.
And I'm happy to follow up the report back.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, if you could add this to next month's council meeting again, so we can follow up with what happens in the municipal court? Any further discussion on that issue? Seeing none. Move on to Council President Communications. Realistically, it's the end of June. My comments, other than to say, wish Councilman Lanning a speedy recovery, I hope he gets well and gets well fast, takes good care of himself. Chamber's not the same without him. I know most of you probably don't expect to hear that from me, but it's always good to have him here. He's been here the entire six years ever in the council, so it still doesn't feel right that he's not here. Secondly, 4th of July is coming up. Everybody be safe. Everybody watching at home. Don't shoot fireworks off. It's illegal in Cranston. And if you do have ground fireworks, please be careful. Please be safe. Please be responsible. With that said, I will move on to Councilmember Communications. Councilman Stychos, you are first on the list.
Just looking for a report on this property.
I left the folder on this desk. So, you might have to. Yeah. Councilman, Fekro left a folder for you, a report on your desk, and she also has another copy for any council people who may be interested in looking. This is a report of documents that obviously aren't going to, you know, impact any potential litigation we may have with this company, but this is a report of everything, in fact, police reports dating back to '08, which is before we came in, before the funding administration came in, and then from my building inspector from that era forward of visits, violations, notices. So it's a whole history. We still continue to deal with the fact that we are restricted terribly by state law as to what we can or cannot do, the types of violations, in many cases, a DVM related, and I can't control the fact that DVM chooses or does not choose to issue violations. What I can say is our building inspector, again, has gone out and is citing them for any floating debris near the waterway that we can issue citations for. So we are really going right to the letter of the law of what we can do within our community as a municipality to find them in any cases where they are in violation. We continue to know that it's a very difficult situation for the neighbors. We certainly like to encourage businesses to be able to do business in a good, friendly, neighborly manner, but in this particular case, obviously, you can see there's a folder full of history here, and we have really made every effort and continue to do so.
Councilman Stychos, you have a follow-up.
Director Pyke went back out.
And what was that violation for?
That violation, there's a violation that if you have loose debris near the river.
You said loose debris?
Loose debris, floating debris, you know, anything that could get trapped in the waterways, we can cite for that. So we will, or have. I don't know if it went out Friday or Thursday, but we talked about it in the middle of last week, that we do have the authority to cite for that, and I personally asked Inspector Pyke to do so.
And as far as DDM, what is their position on this operation?
I really can't speak for DDM, with all due respect. We've asked them, we question what the compliance is. I don't always feel comfortable that what they may have sitting next to a waterway or, you know, what machinery or equipment or vehicles, but I don't have the authority to tell them to cite them, and if they choose to go there and not cite them, I honestly can't speak for why they haven't.
But as far as them being covered by the freedom to farm, what is?
There are portions of what they do that are covered, and there are portions that are not, but they're sort of running two businesses in that one location, and that's what makes it very complicated. There's a landscaper, there's a nursery. The nursery falls under the right to farm, the landscaping doesn't. How you delineate which activity is which on which given moment, maybe that's part of the problem that the state is looking at, but again, that's a state issue. The right to farm is really a state issue. And as I said, we're just doing whatever we can do on our end. We have asked the state, as have the neighbors. I've encouraged the neighbors to talk to the state reps, because they may be the best course of action at this point, because I do believe it's at the level of the State House. But again, anything that's our level, we are, we are taking on.
But you said you were limited by the right to farm.
Mm-hmm.
So?
There are certain things that they do that fall under the right to farm that I may not, for instance, I may not be able to tag them for.
As far as I know, they do hardly any landscape growing at that site.
Mm-hmm.
It's all trucks and.
But we do have a nursery designation in addition to a landscape designation, and that's what, as I understand it, the problem comes in, and maybe that's why DDM isn't. I don't know. I mean, I certainly have a problem with reaching out as well to DDM, we have, and I again feel that the state reps may be the best way to go on this, is they may have a little more jurisdiction on this than I do. Clearly, the spirit of right to farm was to encourage farms and large nurseries that were growing to be able to continue operations so we could maintain farming in the state. This seems to walk a very fine line. But again, I do have to be a little careful because I think there may be potential litigation, and it's between, you know, a business and private residence, and I don't want the city getting dragged into something that we're trying to, you know, butt work to the letter of the law, and I don't want to get into a situation where I discuss something that could be potential litigation as well.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a copy of that most recent complaint? Please.
From whom? Which complaint?
The violation, the note.
Whatever Stan has given out last week, or whatever he gave out, yes. I will get that for you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, President. I, too, have also received numerous complaints about this from people in the neighborhood. They did have an organizational meeting last week at 144 Linden Road, of which they asked me to attend, and based on the pending relegation, the potential for it, I decided not to go. But I was notified by the administration that they were working on it, and that DDM was notified, especially in regards to the spillage into the water. So again, we are stayed on top of it. The administration is on top of it, and it's kind of a mixed-use property at this point. I went over and looked at it, and there seems to be an awful lot of activity other than farming going on, particularly with heavy machinery. But just to reassure the neighbors in that area that the administration's working on it, and both Councilman Stychos and myself are both on top of it.
Thank you. I too very concerned about what's going into the water there. That's a huge concern.
There may be no further comments. Councilman Arquette, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Frehman. I think we went over this last council meeting, we gave information, but I would just like to make a couple of comments, if I may. Since that last meeting, I've received two letters, three phone calls, and two emails pertaining to constituents consuming surveillance cameras. I know my bill has been continuing. I just would appreciate the C Council creating a study commission to find out what we can do to prevent intrusion of our fourth amendment rights or act on my bill either way. So I'm requesting that the Council President create some type of study commission and try to get a bill through this by the end of the year.
In response, I do think it's coming up for hearing again this month, so we'll have some more discussion about it, and hopefully, I know there were some challenges on the heights and requirements, and we'll see if we can vet it out again.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Peploskis?
The United Senate Council President, I just want to follow up with the administration, see if we can get a tree warden or a tree, some tree trimming in Knightsville, specifically around the Knightsville Library and down towards the gazebo.
So I know there's ongoing discussion on whether our department can internally do some of that. Some of it is sort of National Grid responsibility, but I know we're not always thrilled with how Grid cuts the trees with the big hole in the middle. But we will talk to Grid, get the tree warden out there. I'm not sure our equipment can go high enough, that seems to be the question. What we can do internally, we definitely will do. If not, we're going to have to look at just costing out what might need to be done.
My concern is just that they're very overgrown and the trucks hit them, the tractor trailers that come through, so.
But we definitely need to be trimmed back.
Thank you.
Any additional council members with, Council Vice President Favecchio?
Thank you, Council President. Just to bring everyone up to date, I want to apologize, I was trying to get our safety subcommittee report done by tonight, but the legislature's been long, and I've had some other issues, and I've been working way too many hours on other things, so by next council meeting, I should have it, if not much earlier. So thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilman Hopkins?
Yes, through the President to the administration, just a quick question in regards to the 50-50 sidewalk program. I have a resident on Ward Two that said he applied, was accepted, and has repeatedly asked to get his sidewalk done to no avail. Went over the other day and took some pictures of it. He said that he was approved to have the sidewalk done, and he's still looking for an answer.
Could you give me any?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional council member communications this evening? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. All business, there is no old business. Introduction of new business, Madam Clerk.[1601.54]